A little bit, I've got a nasty infection in my ears, so I don't hear everything that you're saying. But on the Trunion end of it, I look at it this way, first of all, we better find out if it's even feasible to start this project. We've talked about it a little bit, but we need to find out if it's for sale or not, first of all. Put the road in. I say this here, get that started with a yes or a no. We will either sell some property or however we acquire. I do think that it should be on a fairly fast track, not real fast pass, but a laid out project time wise with with that particular part of it. But I don't see it being a top priority for Kenyon right now. The top priority that I may be jumping ahead here a little bit, I'm sorry. But I do feel Pearl Street is a project that sewer needs to be done. That has a priority. In my opinion of it, that that needs to be done quick. And it definitely is something that needs to be done. You know, when you go out of town to another state or another town, what's the first impression that you get? If the highways are nice, man, they take care of everything. If you go to a city, the streets are nice, they always take good care of them. It gives you an impression that they know what's going on. So I'm looking at this here, when we're talking about, we've got Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Tenth Street down on the South End. They're paying the same taxes as what somebody else pays up on a Blacktop Street, and they're driving around on gravel. I don't think that's fair to those people down there. Now, I'm not saying to build a whole new street, but I do think that we should consider making something that would be Blacktop for them to drive on. It'll bring their value of their property up. It'll make the city of Kenyon look better too, when people do drive around. Another thing, when we look at overlays of construction, I'm looking at water mains in particular. Fifty, sixty years, they're around, some of them are a hundred years around. And that Blacktop does not last that long before we have to do it. So I'm looking out, we're making a patch on certain things. But especially Fourth Street is one of them, there's various other ones that are around. If we could put an overlay on, it looks good, it'll still stay there for twenty years. Then go ahead and do the pipe, you know, do all of the utilities into it. And what it is to just let it go and we start all new projects. Sixth Street, yes, from Redway to Houston, yeah. But I think, my personal opinion is from Spring Street and Sixth, tie in there and go to Houston, somewhere into the future with it. That, I think, needs to be repaired. But the whole thing at once, I don't think we should take that big of a project down at one time.
You said Spring to Houston?
And I'm sorry, Derek.
Spring to Houston is what you said? I'm just taking notes on what you're saying.
You said Spring to Houston.
Spring to Houston, do that along the school. Get that out of the way. I even found out, thanks to Wayne, sanitary sewer actually runs into people's private yards. I was surprised, I learned a lot from Wayne. I would suggest every one of you go with him for an evening. You're gonna learn a lot of things in this town that I never knew even existed. And that, so this is something that I think we should really look at some of his ideas on it, but I also look at it too. Not spending a ton of money with the situation with the economy the way it is. We don't know what's coming up, we know interest rates are going up. Let's try to go progress forward, but not overdo it. Exactly, I don't have an outlay, but I do think that we should look something in that order. At least make people happy. Put the frosting on the cake, I guess, is how I would say it, on certain things on Blacktop and that.
Yeah, and yeah, it's like that Fifth Street, that right, that Fifth Street behind this, you know, in front of this, I guess, north of the school. That really needs.
Eighth Street?
Fifth.
Oh, Fifth Street, yeah.
And that's pretty terrible.
Depends on what you wanna do. I'm I'm up for whatever they wanna do, but I do know this much anyway, that we should really, if nothing else, throw in holes.
Yeah, right, yeah.
What I'd like to do with that road would be widening it, because it's just, it's a one car path right now.
Yeah.
And it does get pretty busy, like to widen it, it's just, it's in green space, so I think it'd be fairly easy to take that space over. Address the storm issues in the road. I think that's why the road is so bad, is because the storm sewer stuff isn't right. You know, its asphalt curb, that's busting up. It's a great idea with sidewalk, I never even thought of the sidewalk aspect of it on the one side. Because the school's fence is right up tight to the other side.
Yeah, but that fence could come out. I mean, you've got green actually on both sides, right? Because there's some green going into the parking lot for the little apartment thing there. And then there's, I mean, that little baseball field thing would have to, but that, just move that a little bit further south. I mean, there's there's so much green space there where that could be redone, that wouldn't be a problem.
But at least if it was a two-track road.
Yeah.
You know, if you added six, eight feet to the road and repaved it.
And I, you know, another, like, I don't know, like, for grant opportunities or anything, but the buses go by there every day, I mean, they use that.
Yeah.
So it is a safety issue for for bussing. I I don't know how to.
Well, it is, and this kid's.
When I was talking about the grant opportunities, most of them aren't in the form of pedestrians, say, throughout the school and that type of thing, and there is no sidewalk.
There's a ton of kids that walk that road.
Oh, yeah.
And it truly, that to me, I think, would be a no-brainer to at least look for some sort of special budgeting.
Some of those, some of those programs are, I know Sita's working on some of those, because there's, that's a multi-year approach.
So have you seen much safer route to school? I mean, have you been in, I mean, have you seen them do actual, like, help with street projects?
We've incorporated, we've incorporated routes into street projects, but it's additional. It's not gonna bring any of these numbers down. It's just gonna cover the cost of additional work that isn't included.
Because I've seen it, I mean, in a community I've been in, used for crosswalks, stop signs, sidewalk reconstruction.
Yep.
But not for street costs.
Yep.
It can be used for the sidewalk, even for the sidewalk. If we could give grant money to pay for a sidewalk to connect down there, that'd be, I mean, that would be a nice.
Yeah, so it's still a help.
Because you've got the sidewalk on Bullis already.
Yes.
You just tie that in, and then it would tie into that that corner on, because there's sidewalk on Spring.
Yep.
That turns the corner.
Yep, yep.
So if we're talking about that, based on your options, that would be an option pre the hybrid. Now, it would be in 2025. Are you saying you want to move that up to 2023, Fifth Street? Or we brought Fifth Street up?
Well.
No, I don't think, if we wanna get funding, if we wanna get grant money for that sidewalk, it'd probably be more like 2027.
Right.
That one that we're talking about is a competitive grant, it's not uncommon to have to apply to that multiple times.
Yeah. But I went, my my thought is, my thought is with any of these projects, if we're gonna do it, do it right, even if it takes a little longer. You know, rushing projects is not, you know, usually not a good thing. So if we need to, if Fifth Street has to go up to 2027, but then we get a grant to pay for a sidewalk there, great. I mean, it'd be great for the the future generations, so.
As far as Fifth Street, I remember it, you know, that was always, it was a one-way street before. And it curved around, and it was put there just for bus drop-off. You know, because that depot that used to be your coal chute where Kingsbury is, it moved around and had one-way street. I don't know how it went back to a two-way, because it's not wide enough, but that that was the background on that.
Yeah, because the whole background was just elementary school.
Yep, but that was for the bus drop-off, is what it was.
Yeah. Yeah, it it can't really even be a legal two-way street, can it? I mean, the signs aren't there to say so. But I mean, yeah, you meet somebody, you're, yeah, straddling the fence.
Derek, what do you show, like, with Fifth Street? And your assumption that that's like a total reconstruction or more of a?
It's a reconstruction, and I mean, if we're talking about the improvements that were just discussed here, that that's not a small project. It looks like it's small, but it's gonna be acminged out pretty quick.
And the utilities, are there utilities under that?
No, I don't think so.
Water and storm sewer.
The storm sewer.
The storm sewer is alongside it.
So is the the base of that street bad?
And parts.
Okay.
But the storm sewer is alongside it, there's no sanitary unit.
So mill off an overlay or?
The key is you're you're widening and you're moving things around, so by the time you get to it, you're ripping up everything. It's just, you can try to, like, save, like, you know, fifty-foot segment here, a hundred foot there, but it's it's not gonna end up saving money and you'll end up with a patch.
It's not like you're digging twenty feet down, we either.
Exactly, exactly, yep. The, you know, the most, if we're looking at a street utility project, the largest portion of the cost is just the sewer. I mean, it's probably sixty percent, and the utility storm sewer is the remainder. So that's what you're fighting with there. And that one was 2025. You know, there are other things, if you decide that, okay, that, you know, you don't want to, you just don't wanna spend that amount of money, well, you could just go in with one of the paving projects and just do some more patching and buy another five years. But this is the prioritization that comes into it. It's not gonna address everything, but.
Yeah, or or mill it, like, do a mill and overlay, but then it's not, that wouldn't involve widening it.
Yep.
But it would involve at least having a solid street there.
For a shorter length of time, yes.
Yeah, but it would be for.
Can we just fix it and then work on the grant?
Well, that's what.
You know, like, get it so it's kind of a mess right now, I mean, that thing is beat up.
That's what I looked at, is just strip it off the pavement and re, like, the mayor was saying, I gotta repave it. I know it's on there, I understand that, but we have so much other stuff that needs addressing.
Yeah, just get that kind of nice looking, and then we can maybe work on the grant with that for later.
Yeah, that's where I've always kind of come down on that one.
Yeah.
Because we have so many other streets that need attention. If we could do that tied into another project, you know, as an alternate, for example, and just do a mill and overlay.
And which, and actually, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the sidewalk grant, right? You might wanna take a look if there's actually more sidewalk than just that one block. I can tell you, if you are looking at just one block of sidewalk, there's absolutely no way that, say, throughout the school, grants work. It's federal dollars, and there's a ton of work that you gotta do. Just that work alone is probably gonna be more than just hiring a local contractor and just building. Don't even design it, just go out there and build it.
What's your shoot, from a hit number on a block of sidewalk? Is that forty grand?
I I don't, that's a tough, that's a tough one.
I don't like, it's not huge dollars for a sidewalk on that road.
So it might not even be worth asshole and.
But if it could be repaved and you could add the sidewalk, that would help.
Yeah, if you could throw it into the mix, is, hey, we got this, we're gonna do some sidewalks. But just to delay a project over.
You might, you may be able to get it for, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so you were talking peanuts in the big picture of things. Perhaps somebody buy your sidewalk for you.
Because I remember that stretch down there on, going across Pearl Creek, that that cost so little that it came in under the actual bid just for the street project. So like, you know, the the bid out for the street project was, there was enough savings there because it came in low enough to pay for the sidewalk that went in there. So, yeah, it isn't, it isn't, we're not talking a quarter million dollars for a sidewalk. It's it's a lot cheaper than that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one thing, I guess Derek and I need to talk about this a little more, but I don't wanna cut this, I don't wanna just toss it out there, but, you know, when you have a street like Ninth that's never been paved, could you, in the assessment policy, could some of that cost be assessed back to those property owners?
Your assessment, your assessment policy says that one hundred percent of it should be assessed back.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. That's, and I'm not saying it has to be hundred percent, I don't know, I haven't looked today, but if some of that can be assessed back, that would help quite a bit.
Yeah.
And the same with that mill and overlay, if there's some way that could be, because I remember, like, a long time ago, talking to Jeff, the superintendent, back eight, nine years ago, the school might help us pay some of that cost. Now, I talked to Pest about it a little bit, but I never really got an answer, but, you know, it's so school-centric, and they don't land along there, that it's kind of like, we'd like to bump this up and get it fixed. So can you help us?
The, I mean, you probably know, the the assessment policy does say specifically, you don't assess for mill and overlays, but you do assess for reconstructions.
Yeah, we don't normally for mills.
That that, when is a project no longer mill and overlay and is a reconstruction is kind of a gray area that you can decide.
Or if you have a road that's never been paved.
Yeah.
That's another one too, that maybe could be looked at as adding it to the assessment policy, that a portion of that is assessed back.
Yeah.
Because I know on Ninth Street, there was people there that were trying to circulate a petition to order or ask us, the council, to do a reconstruct.
Yep.
And then they didn't get enough signatures, which I figured they wouldn't. But they have to get, I think, basically a hundred percent of all the frontage. But anyway, there's, people have already talked about it.
Yeah.
So I think if we had a reasonable number for just, you know, for overlaying it, a lot of those people probably would balk at that.
Yep.
How did the owners along there?
Yep. Yeah, and I think if, I mean, if you're, if you're talking about a significant portion of that cost in assessment, well, that is essentially nothing. So, you know, the thing that will come about a little bit is if you have done projects, similar projects in the past where you haven't assessed well, you might catch some flack about that. But trying to be, you know, if you set a policy moving forward that this is how we're gonna do it, and you stick to that, then.
It hasn't been done before, so it's a new thing, you know, but we haven't had projects, we haven't really done mill and overlay for, of any significance for a long, long time.
Yeah, and that's where, if you were to change your, if you were to change your policy that says, okay, now mill and overlay projects, it would, it would cause challenges because then, if Wayne just wants to go out and, you know, overlay a quarter of a block of street or something like that, well, you didn't do that one, why are you doing this one? And that's where it gets hairy.
Yeah, but we haven't had that, that's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
Bullis was the last street we milled and overlaid.
Yeah, that's right.
From the back of the school to Main Street.
Yeah.
Steve, that was one of Steve's final projects. We saved up, I think we saved it for one year, then we milled the whole thing and did it.
If that might be, I mean, if you're looking at some of those streets that are currently gravel and trying to work them in to somehow get paved, that might be the answer for it. Because the part that I don't like about that is if you're replacing streets that need to be overlaid with paving new, that's, that's where the impacts come about, and it's gonna result in more project costs later. So we can avoid that by doing something like the assessments.
That type of assessment, yep.
Yeah.
That would help.
So do you want us today to kind of pick one of these, or can we think about it?
You can, you can if you want to, up these, and Mark, your way in if you, if you're thinking something different. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of information. If you wanna see another option, we can do that. I will tell you, what we've got next is some decision points on 2023. If you're comfortable with moving forward with those costs,
Yeah.
then at least we can get moving on those, and maybe we can talk about the stuff on the back end later.
Yeah, I kind of feel like, I don't, I kind of feel like that, I don't know, like, yeah.
No, it's a.
You know, before with the twenty-three, I feel like that needs.
To a month or two, I think it's not that time critical.
Yeah, okay.
The twenty-three stuff has to be decided anyway, but that's, this doesn't have to be, but at the same time, I don't want to go too long either, because you kind of lose momentum then, and lose knowledge, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But yeah, they come back, I don't know, a month or two, whatever, you know, come back and, it just depends where everybody's at with it, you know, if everybody feels like, well, that hybrid looks good or whatever.
The the one thing, oh, one thing about the 2023 projects though, is you don't, there's no difference between option one, two, and three. All of those projects you have slated for 2023 remain in all three proj, you know, in all three scenarios, correct?
Just option two is deleting the line.
Oh, right. So what that tells me then is, our engineer is saying, these projects are pretty critical and need to be done. Because otherwise, he would take the Pearl Creek sanitation line and put that out a few years, and you're not doing that. So so to me, I I think the 2023, for if, for me personally, I am supportive of the the 2023 projects that you have outlined because you have talked about them enough where you've gotten through to me that they need to be done. So that that's where I'm leaning, you know. But I do think, and I'm I'm committed to this, Molly, but I do think that the Trunion Road, it wouldn't hurt to give ourselves a couple extra years to raise the money on that and give you guys time to, because that's gonna be big, you know, acquire land and do the preliminary, the soil samples. So if that isn't in 2028, if that were, say, in 2030, you know, I'd 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 be, I I think putting the money towards it early and having it designated there so it gets done, yes. But I think it might not hurt to give a extra two years to to get all our Ts crossed and Is dotted on that one. And the Fifth Street one, yeah, if that one is gonna be a half million dollars for a tiny sign in the street that nobody lives on, and we can get ninety percent of of the benefit by just doing the mill and overlay and buy ourselves twenty years on it, it's not the worst thing in the world.
Yeah, and it's always what you come back to later, you come back to it in ten years or something. Yeah.
I mean, it, we've made that thing operate that way for twenty, almost twenty-five years.
Right.
So it's not as if we're getting pounded by public outrage, but, I mean, it would be, would be nice to fix it right at some point, but I don't.
But for now, just get it so it's not, because it's an incredible nightmare back there.
For a street that nobody lives on.
We do a lot of flack for the condition that it says.
Oh, yeah.
My thought was, if you're gonna, like I said, do it right, let's just widen it a few feet and make it something.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that'd be nice too, but, yeah, for now. Because it's just like the whole apocalypse, isn't it?
It's just erupting.
Yeah, I mean, it's just awful.
We put a patch in it a couple, two years ago.
Yeah.
That was kind of where the worst spot, now the, the new worst spot's right next to the patch. And it just kind of shifted down the line.
That's what, I mean, that road is a, is an example of a street that's too far deteriorated to just overlay.
Yeah.
If you try to overlay it, it'll be nice for like five years, but then it'll blow up on me.
Sure.
It's at that reconstruction stage, which is why the cost is so much.
But if you, if you mill and overlay it, I mean, if you mill off the pavement.
You have to completely remove, remove the.
The, the.
Right.
The the problem isn't the pavement itself, the problem is the soil below. That's, we need to address the problem, not not the skin on the top. So, and again, you can, you can do stuff, but just don't expect much life out of it to be doing anything less than that.
Does everybody understand what a mill and overlay is?
No, what is that?
Awesome question, okay. Payment's just sitting here, we're just gonna put two or three more inches of blacktop on now.
Okay.
That's it.
Well, you grind off.
You're gonna grind off.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes, sometimes it's grinding off a layer, sometimes, sometimes you grind off just a portion of it, but in essence, it's putting on a new skin, a blacktop over the top.
Okay.
It just improves ride quality. There's still gonna be cracks in the pavement one or two years after, but it's gonna make the ride last.
Like you did that on Forest Street, like, in 2016 or something? Is that what you, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of the roads that.
The block in front of your place was mill and overlayed.
Yeah, that's what.
They usually, they edge mill alongside the curve so the drainage still works properly.
Okay, yep.
And then it kind of tapers to the center, but yeah, they remove it. If the road's like four inches thick on the side, it'll take like an inch off, and it'll taper to nothing in the center. They put another skim coat of pavement down.
Sure.
So everything that was cracked below that will eventually show through that new surface layer.
It just makes it smooth.
That's why that Fifth Street, you gotta take all that out, you can't just do that, you gotta rip that hole down.
That's what I'm saying, the problem is down below.
Yeah, okay.
So Derek, like, there's, in recent years, there's been projects, there was this one in Dodge County on 2422, from Concord, Old Concord East. So they peeled off the pavement down, and then they ground it up, milled it up, respread it. They bladed, they brought in more aggregate.
Yeah.
But they didn't go down, down to the base. Now, would something like that work?
Yes, exactly, it would, and that's what I would categorize.
Not like a total, total reconstruct then, where you go down.
That's what I'm talking about, is the gray area that maybe you can assess for it, because, well, it's not, it's not really an overlay. It's kind of a reconstruction.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be a lot less than a total reconstruct.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
So, okay.
Would you call it like a reconditioning?
Or I don't know, that's that's reclaim and pave is what it's called.
They did on Highway Five too, they did the same thing, they peeled all the asphalt off on, where thirteen turns into five. They left it gravel for a year.
Yep, it turned out pretty good though.
Except for the bridge.
They replaced all the culverts.
Except for the bridge.
They collapsed a bridge.
And they were, they were putting blacktop on it, and it fell through the bridge.
You're milling up, so you're kind of tearing it down.
Because it's, it's right up to that, you know, I mean, there's a parking lot there, so it's not even like, you're just kind of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you have to talk to the school, high schools or whatever, but I don't think so either.
Well, the the assessing might be, the school doesn't have any money at the moment.
We'll tell them in a town.
Maybe you could put it on to like a fifty-year.
They're not gonna have to pay for another year, I mean, they'll figure something out. It's not gonna be that much.
My question on Trunion, and I go back to what he said, do we need to do some sort of research to see if it's even a feasible project? I mean, what if we truly have no options there because they're not willing to sell? We have no way of actually making the road?
What we do, we condemn.
Eminent domain.
We we condemn it, if it comes to that, and a lot of times with projects, we do, and Riggs can answer this, describe this process better, but we do what's called quick take. So within ninety days or four months, we just basically have a couple appraisals, and we just come with a, you have to follow a certain process to determine value, and basically, boom, boom, you know, it goes to court, and it's done. Yeah, that's not gonna happen, I'm fairly certain with this outfit, with these people, excuse me, with this owner. That's ultimately what's gonna happen, and then what happens is later, they come back and they can appeal it, and they can try to get more out of it. But the other question is boring, so soil conditions. I mean, my question is, if we go through there, but how do we get them when we don't even have? You know, it's like, we don't own a property, that's the problem with it. I can talk to ASCS about the soil conditions, and I can get a kind of a thirty thousand foot idea of how the soils are, but that's the biggest problem, is are we going into a swamp? Or are we going into, I don't mean a swamp, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, with maybe water.
How would the soil conditions?
Yeah.
That's the problem, because that affects a new road cost. That's so much of the cost, like Derek said, what's underneath, and how do you determine that? And we have two routes we could go, so how do we know which route's gonna be better? We don't have access to that land, and if we just say, well, we like this route better because it runs up Trunion, the south route might actually be more cost-effective to, you know, build up. You know, Derek, maybe.
The, I wouldn't, the soil conditions are definitely gonna, you know, that's gonna affect cost. I don't think it's gonna be substantial. Just as an example, the business park, the border, we built a road. There's a trail that I designed for Rochester that is literally going through a swamp, and they're building it right now. There, you can build through a lot, and you can find cost-effective ways to do that.
There's a lot of materials now that can be put down that.
The bigger part is gonna be, what's the most, you know, what's the shortest route, what's the most effective route. The bigger part is gonna be, what's the most, you know, what's the shortest route, what's the most effective route.
We can determine, you can determine that in like, pretty quick.
I think the, the initially, what you would do, we don't actually need to enter the property. If we could just do a very rough layout, so, well, yeah, you could do that too, but um. Like MINDOT will, before they get into any type of detail design, they'll do a preliminary geometric layout. Just do a really rough grading plan to figure out how much land are we gonna impact to construct. Put that together, you know how much land you're impacting, and now you know how much right of way or easement that you need. That's what you need to, to, you know, to tell the property owner, okay, we need, you know, we need this width of, of uh, of. Of field to get a roadway in or to accommodate the right of way, whatever. But it's, it's pretty basic information that you can use and then you, a, a lot of times the soil boorings. I, I have projects even before where the uh, property or the right of way or easement is acquired through eminent domain. You can still negotiate with the property owner and just say, hey, do you mind if our truck goes out here? This is headed toward this anyway and most of the time they're accommodating. If they don't, then you go to a quick take first and then it's yours. The benefit of quick take is it's a short period of time. And now the city acquires the land. As long as you can show that it's bene-, uh, public benefit, which roadways almost always you can. Um, then you can acquire the, the, the flex point or the negotiation point is how much does it work?
I mean, I only want this roadway. So you're just, I mean, okay, but morally. Do you know what I mean?
Before you would do that, you would talk with the property.
Right, I mean, yeah, I understand, like, so, no, the government can just, and I kind of don't like that, like, so, I mean, I know we need the road. But it's like, okay, so now the government can just come in and be like, I'm taking your land.
Just so you know, Mary, this happens more often.
Well, it's terrible. I don't really wanna do that.
Okay, but let me give you an example.
I know.
Let me give you an example. So County one, which runs into Red Wing.
Yeah, yeah.
There was uh, one landowner, we had, I don't know, but six landowners, five of them were willing to sell to the county, one guy wasn't.
Okay.
And uh, put up a big stink. And you know, we did the, the assessment, or we looked at what it would take. To move it over to avoid his property.
Okay.
Would have been an additional cost to the county taxpayers of over two million dollars to go a quarter mile to avoid this guy's property. So then you have to ask yourself the question, what's worse? Is it worse that we, and we went through eminent domain. I should have kept the nasty letters, so you could, communist and this and that, you know, it was kind of funny. But um, was it, was it, was it worse then to take his, I don't even know how many acre, it wasn't even hardly that many acres.
Right.
Um, and the court came through, he got paid a very generous settlement. We cut a check, we didn't just take his property, he got the money for it. And we saved the county taxpayers two and a half million dollars. Or should we have respected his uh, capricious demands? And then just said to the county taxpayer, well, you know, because we didn't want to hurt his feelings, you're now paying two and a half million dollars more. And you have now a dangerous curve in this road.
Yeah, I mean, and I.
So, so, but I, 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 I understand the philosophy of it. We talk about it in my econ class all the time, we're thinking about eminent domain. But I will say there are times when it is absolutely necessary. And if we're looking at, okay, do we, uh, I mean, how many people live in Tronium? What do you got up there? Five hundred people?
A lot.
So do we put five hundred people, do we continue to put their uh, safety at risk? In order not to injure the feelings of this one person? Um, to me, it's like, you know what? The courts will come through, they'll make sure the settlement's fair and it, there might be hurt feelings, but in the long run. You never, you know, you can see some of these roads where they didn't use eminent domain. And it's like, the, the cur-, County thirty, it goes like this, and then it cranks like this, and then it cranks like that because they didn't want to take someone's property.
I mean, I mean, fair enough. I mean, I, I understand yours, I understand, you know, and I, fair enough.
Now.
All the same.
Yeah.
It's still like, you know, somebody's.
If we were taking, if we were taking the property in order to build like an amusement park, I'm totally on your side.
Right.
But this is a totally different animal. This is for public safety.
Right.
And uh, for an emergency access route for five hundred people in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I see that, I, it's still just, like, I.
I totally understand, yep.
I grapple with that.
Yep, yep.
Like.
I actually, I actually admired that, that we have people in the council that, that look at it that way because that.
You never know, you know, whoever, the owner of that property, he may say, you know what? This might be a good idea, I'll sell and then I can sell all the rest of this property off.
But yeah, just as well.
You know, make some good money off of that again, so.
And the other thing too, is just because the property says no right away, does not mean that it's a hard no all the time. What it is, is improving their negotiating position in court.
Right.
Cause if you go into the judge and say, oh, my, this is my great, 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 great grandpa, you know, then, oh, you got sentimental value. You might get a little bit more money out of it.
Well, I mean, I want to steal that hillside for a trail, I mean, very much, but I mean, you know, but that's a little bit, you know, that's like a walking trail. If we start walking through here, you know, or it's like a, and a road is a, you know, a road too is, well, that's a road. It's not like, oh, maybe we're eating up his whole, you know, farm or just putting a road through it or whatever.
But what concerns me is the access point, we got one access point in there and there's, there's water, a bridge.
Yeah, I mean, there's a.
I, I, I could just see.
Something's gonna happen.
If we never act on this or move down that taking, you know, biting this thing out, at some point, the city's gonna get bid on this deal. And it's gonna be bad.
Yeah, the more people you got up there, it's just gonna get worse.
I could just see the helicopters coming in to evacuate people off because, and then having, you know, every channel on the planet, there were the cameras.
Why didn't the city do something?
Why didn't the city do something when they had a chance to?
Oh, I get sent pictures every time it's blocked. I mean, I, and it's been quite often here, more than normal in the last six months. That there's truly blocked that you cannot get.
Yeah, and there was like, I was there the other day and there was like, uh, uh, they were delivering something to that big house on it and, you know, I mean, it was like. Well, it was semi and I was like, well, I could get squeezed in there, but barely, you know? So I mean, I agree with that a hundred percent, it's just, I have to ask that, cause I'm like, oh, so we're just gonna go ahead and take a little land, I'm gonna, I don't know, I feel about that, but.
If we're gonna do a sculpture garden out there or something, and I'm totally on your side on that one, but this is, my God.
Sculpture garden might be, that's a thing.
Okay.
What are the odds you think another developer would buy another yard?
So for these projects that are, are further out, is there some additional information that you guys would like to see? Or do you just want time to think about it?
I personally don't need time to think about it, but I wanna understand if others do. I mean, I could.
I just, I'm wondering if we need to prepare any more information for a, a later discussion?
I don't think, I don't think that. I mean, I think definitely for the twenty twenty-three, I mean, move forward, I mean, that is already done, so.
Are you thinking one of these two?
Yeah.
Everything, I mean, that's kind of the next decision point here, like the, the budget set forth, it's either, you know. Two point, two point seven five or two million is what the total is up to that.
Is two and three really that same for twenty-three?
Two and three are again. And you know, this reference to, before we get off of this, you know, uh, road development and PFA state. You know, your, your rates, your utility rates have to be at a certain level. Our utility rates are here and that certain level's up here. I mean, our utility rates in the scheme of two studies in the last five years are pretty good. Even though they've been bumped up, I can tell you they're, they're pretty, pretty good right now.
Less than other studies maybe.
So, yes, to get up to that fifty or sixty dollars, we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna force that.
Sure, just to get a grant or something.
Just so you're aware in broad terms, our rates are still pretty low, you know, compared to other cities.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
There's huge variances in cities on what the utility rates are, but ours are toward the bottom. In this region or whatever, so we're not close to that.
So Randy, what do you think about the, the Forest Street lining? And as far as, that should, should that happen next year?
As far as the water or whatever?
Be more Wayne with. Okay.
Cause as far as the body. I just, I'm kind of torn on these discussions because I also live here and I don't wanna see the taxes, you know, make me move out of town either.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, that's always, that was my next question for you, is there a way to. Cut it in half, let's say do procrete, do the moving, do that lining portion of it? You'll kind of not do a number one, but you have to do a little bit more than a two and a three, that's what I would recommend.
So we're, we're getting ahead of that ourselves on the agenda. So first we gotta finish this part and then that's the next thing we're gonna talk about. So do we wanna, you wanna just, you don't have to take any action, but um, we'll bring it back. Either at another work session or at a upcoming council meeting, maybe October? Seems like far out, but it's really not. You know, cause we have a meeting in what, two weeks, give or take, so I don't, we could do it then or we could do it. That'd be one question I'd ask you, just in general terms, is when should we bring it back? I'm not even necessarily gonna put it in minutes, I'm just. For, you know, to kind of know where everybody's at. Um, if we don't take any action at this point, if the council doesn't take any action at this point. Then, you know, we could bring it up at the September meeting, we could bring it up at the October meeting.
Well, we've taken action that twenty twenty-three, we all agree on that project, that projects.
That's next on the agenda.
Okay, so you're just saying overall?
Yeah, overall.
I'm just going to a meeting, you know, the overall, I think, I think we need to do the twenty twenty-three today, right?
Yeah, and that'll be next. As far as the CFP goes, its direction, the council needs to give us direction on basically which one of these plans do we wanna go with?
Mark, are we able to, to take action tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is posted as a meeting.
Okay.
Yes, you could.
Good. Well, I kind of like, I kind of like uh. Option three with some, with a few modifications to it.
Yes. I like Wayne's idea of the, the one and a half, the Pearl Creek and then, then what do you think in Forest would be in twenty-four? On twenty-five?
See, I, I have that, I have that pushed out to the, like, twenty thirty right now.
See, that's, my opinion on some of this street stuff is, I agree Tronium Road needs to happen. But I, I hate to see it come before existing needs or damaged stuff already.
Damage this treatment plant and then have that expense.
Well, what's, what's important uh, for this is more the approximate dollar amounts. So I wouldn't, if we're talking about Forest Street in twenty thirty-one or twenty twenty-eight, I would say it doesn't matter. I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that affect which option one, two, or three you wanna pick. It's more approximate cost range that you're talking about during that planning here. And understanding that next year we're gonna be looking at this again, and a year after that, and a year after that, it can always change.
So we can change it next year?
Yeah. This is a living document.
Yeah, you can change it. This is gonna be brought up every year or something.
Okay, and we can modify it as.
No.
I agree, I like the hybrid option. I mean, yes, there's some, exactly, like you're saying, so. And I agree with you, Wayne. I, I a hundred percent agree, we need to take care of what we have, immediate needs, absolutely. What I don't want to see is we continue to just push it down the road because we continue to have things that we need to work on. That's the only thing that I don't wanna see. Twenty twenty-eight, I agree. I mean, we're talking only six years out, that's not that much.
No.
I mean, it might take up much of the plan that they, I don't know, you know, so am I fine moving that out? That's probably tiki-tack at this point. Um, I, I still wanna see it there, I still wanna see it twenty thirty-one and not continue to get pushed out. Um, but I'm fine with moving that and going with hybrid and the option of hybrid than to start to focus on your twenty twenty-three. My team.
So the, with the hybrid option, or, and you mentioned this before. The projects for twenty twenty-three, whether we did both of those linings or just the Pearl Creek lining. You, you'll need a half a million dollars from, if plugged into the budget. The other money is gonna come from sewer and water rates or?
There's a street element to this that would be next levy and then uh, there's, the water main looping would be funded through PMU. However, they would like to fund that portion of it.
Oh, Wayne's probably in.
That's realistically a pretty minor portion of it.
Okay, so then let's talk about how minor, so what, what are we looking at then? To, to do both Forest and Pearl Creek? We're looking at a half a million of cash infusion? And then where's, where's the difference, is, cause we're looking at a difference between about one point seven million and two point. So where's the other million coming from?
That would have to, it would have to come from uh, certain areas, an increase in sewer rates unless you're allocating that somewhere else. Realistically, it would come from somewhere else to an extent.
Well, okay, so we had one point two million plugged into the plan for this project. Now we figure. One point four to two point one probably is how we do it.
The.
So anyway, what was, we've talked about on a staff level what this is. The Pro Creek part of it, definitely go ahead with next year and then have the Forest Street lining be an alternate. Because if we get really good prices and we're going from one point two to one point four, we should do it next year.
Yep.
But if it's like two mil or just somewhere around there, um, then maybe not next year. Then maybe that alternate doesn't get accepted and that gets moved down the road. I hope it's not.
We can, so we can, this one's a little bit, okay, so the alternate thing is what we did on Red Wing. Uh, when we added the alley of Forest Street. That one was easy because there was like the same kind of work. Uh, this one's a little bit different because like the lift station. The lift station and rerouting is gonna be one type of contractor and the lining is a completely different kind of contractor. So, and that and what we'd be talking about in terms of an alternate is like another fifty percent in project cost. If we're talking about like a ten percent increase, good alternate, but a big, huge, massive increase, there's, there's no way we're gonna have seven hundred thousand dollars in savings.
So your one point four to two point whatever is based on two different contracts?
Yeah. Well, uh, you could run him as part of this thing, but it's gonna be two different types of contractors. So if we were, if we were saying, uh, we wanted to do the Pearl Creek rerouting and we wanted to do a little bit of lining. You could add some additional lining beyond that as an alternate, but you wouldn't want to.
Okay.
You wouldn't wanna add it because it's like a new, completely different element to the work.
Okay.
Um, I think the best pricing that you're gonna get for lining is a big lining project. So I'd recommend you actually wait a couple of years if you don't wanna do it all right now and we figure that out. Leave it on the list. But I'd recommend you actually wait on that. And it's just, I was, I could have mentioned this a little bit at the last meeting, cause you brought it up too, but um. Yeah, this one, that one's just a little unique just in that aspect.
Wayne, take us through your modi-, modified option one then again?
Well, that's Derek had none of it had there. See, the lining guys is a whole different group. And I do realize that you get a better price, the more lining you're gonna do. I was thinking if we just lined. Those, what, three segments?
Okay.
Wasn't it?
The Pine Street stuff down by Pearl Creek?
Yeah, just so that, that part was a hundred percent done. But, but then again, you're probably paying a premium because they're not lining that much. So it makes sense to make a lining project.
So.
Maybe do more streets than just Forest and. Then you do those and another street maybe, who knows, but.
Yeah.
So maybe it does make sense not to do the one and a half.
So I, I will tell you, if, if you guys say that, okay, you wanna do option three, but we don't really like. Uh, exactly what the scope is that we're talking about with this number of dollars. This does not lock you in to just spending that. If we say, okay, we wanna do uh, CIP option three, run that through. We can come up and we'll make an individual decision for this project that, okay, you wanna do a little bit more or a little bit less.
Yeah.
So Derek, what if, what if we would wanna do option three, but we don't like the idea of the Forest being out to twenty thirty-one? We'd like that up in more, say, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
Then I can just move it out there.
There you go.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's the utility rate, it, it's, it's, you know, what does that increase look like? And if that's the direction that you wanna do, then we could.
Well, for, for me, what I. Well, for, for me, what I see is if we tried to do option one next year, we have a million dollars in utility rate changes, uh, we somehow have to find a million dollars out of the utility fund. That, that's, that's an awful lot of money, isn't it? I mean.
Road back.
Yeah, and this was, but I mean, if you guys are sitting on, you know, eighty million, then I guess no, but I guess not, I don't know.
Well, and this was, so what was included in here before was already this?
Yeah.
So I would assume that rate increases were already.
Yeah, there's rate increases that are assumed.
So it'd just be enacting those, and one other thing that I'll add to this then is, we say, okay, we don't wanna do it here. I would try to kinda stay within these project years because variation in the bond, one, one, not two.
Correct.
So I have a, I have a question. Why is it twenty twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, why isn't like?
It was based on a, every three years, but the only thing that kinda screwed it up was the county's project was scheduled for twenty-five. So this year was, there was one year gap every other year.
The main, what, what you're looking at is that's, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where the cash infusion is coming in, so that's when the bonds would be issued, right?
Bonds would be issued, but your first payment would be due till twenty-four.
But you're, but, but you don't wanna issue bonds every single year, you wanna.
Right, that's why that's there. Because when they did the financial projection, they looked at the impacts of the levy, they looked at the impacts of utility rates going up, but they also looked at bonded indebtedness limits. And so what this does is it, it's tied in with existing debt, so when debt, some debt comes off, it's timed so that, you know, maximize that we have, when debt comes up, we have more capacity to do more of a project, but it's all timing. Because you couldn't just do one, you couldn't do it every year, it would, I'd blow us on water, you know?
So Mark, are you, so the, the future of the city then, what you're saying is there will be bonds, there, there most likely will be bonds issued in twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty-one?
Yeah, when you talk about finding a million dollars?
Yep.
That, that's, I mean, I don't, that goes right over my head because we're not gonna find a million dollars, we have to finance it.
Yep.
And what the utility increase does is cover the next year's payment on that.
Okay. So I'll throw this idea out just for, react positively or negatively or both or whatever, that includes everybody here. So I like the option three hybrid, taking the Forest project and looking at that either being a twenty-five or a twenty-eight, or at least being bonded in twenty-five or twenty-eight and wherever else, taking the Tronium project and moving that for thirty-one as a guaranteed thirty-one. Could, or at least bonded in thirty-one. And leaving the rest of it. Yep. Leaving the rest of it the way it is. Now, what am I missing or got wrong? Please, jump in.
Well, I like that, and, and I mean, if it's not set in stone, and we can change it, then, yeah.
Yeah.
And you don't know maybe someone will donate ten million dollars to something?
When you're with a lottery, you give up one of my chances.
I like doing everything I can.
You don't know. Yeah, I like, I like what you're doing for me, most of the time.
I think that makes sense.
It's the most sense. Some, yeah, otherwise it is a huge, huge increase of, well, with option one. Yeah, I agree.
You wanna make a motion?
No, did you hear that?
I'll tell you what.
Okay.
I, I'm at the point where I almost can, so Dan, I'm asking you, if you will do, take my position. I'm not gonna vote on this one way or the other, cause I can, I understand it fully.
Yep.
I really got a problem, I.
Can, can you hear me right now?
I can, yes.
So what, what my thought was, is we go with hybrid three?
Yes.
We take the Forest Street project, which was this here, that's the Forest lining, and we move that either to here or to here, yeah, go to.
There we go, here we go.
So we take the Forest part of that, and we shift it either here or here, and then we take Tronium, and we shift that to thirty-one.
Yeah, that was kinda what I was gathering out of it. But do, make the motion, do the whole, will you, please take it for me? I'm not gonna vote on it, cause I'm not a hundred percent that I followed everything, it isn't right to, uh, to vote on it, I'm sorry.
So Dan, what years did you show Forest Street?
Forest, either twenty-five or twenty-eight, basically giving you guys flexibility to see when that is gonna be a good fit.
Okay.
And then Tronium to thirty-one. So that's nine years, I mean, in, in nine years, something will be, that, that's not long.
Those questions.
No, those questions.
And for something that was never there. What do you, guys weigh in on that?
I like it.
I wanna weigh in on something, it's a little different, but with the, as far as the utilities, electric and water, which probably all, we're basically trying to do projects off our rates, not bonding. But two years ago, we really basically got screwed, uh, in my mind, because we had to come up with money with the, the two projects we did, I know they're good projects, but we had no budget on it, so we, we, we bonded through the city, you know, we're making payments on it, but in my mind, I'd rather do it from, off the rates, which, what, what we're doing right now is good, cause right, you could, you're, you're saying what projects you're looking at, so I can try to get the rates in there and stuff. Or Molly lets me or not, cause she's a commissioner. It just, it did hurt a cou- I mean, it got done, but it did hurt the water department and the Red Wing project.
Yeah, instead of paying it with money you had, you were borrowing money to pay, and better.
Same way with the EVA property, then.
Yep. So we gotta get away from that.
If we can, but I understand things come off.
So the, a plan like this helps you guys figure out what you need to do?
And we are, I mean, this is nothing, I'm still gonna plan on next year doing the Gates Avenue or whatever, tie into the industrial park with water, and we're gonna do the electric too, cause that's part of the thing, if somebody does wanna come in there, we gotta have three baseballs up there. It's not the ideal way, but we have to have that somehow done in there, so.
Big help, thank you.
Yep.
Derek, anything else you wanna?
No, I think, in my opinion, you gave me the right choice, kinda like that.
Mark?
Yeah, no, I think so, I think it's a reasonable, you know, hybrid, I mean, I don't know what else to put, but I mean, I think it's a reasonable approach.
Okay. So I'll move that we go with, uh, CIP option three hybrid, which is page seventeen of the packet, with the changes of shifting the Forest Street lining to being bonded either in twenty-five or twenty-eight, leaving it to, uh, staff to determine and come back to council with recommendation there. And moving Tronium Road Extension to twenty thirty-one.
I'll second it.
Mary, did you want me to do the?
Go ahead, do the whole thing, please.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing done, all, do we have to do roll call or just vote?
Um, just vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? One. Yep. Four, zero to one, four, zero, one.
Okay.
It's pretty cool.
Now, I think, I think, we're a little jerk, right?
Well, you guys have two more things, but hopefully they won't.
Hopefully I'll take that line.
No, they shouldn't take one at all, you pretty much covered them.